Yeah, but look on, look on.
Great.
They were.
There is.
They.
You know.
Great.
Times.
For this.
You're like.
That's big.
In.
Yes.
I need yours.
Um.
Now.
Okay.
He's.
Yeah, so come here, always come great.
Great.
Sure.
Yeah.
They were.
There is.
They're.
They're.
On my.
Right.
Oh, we should be.
That's.
Big.
My.
Those.
If you guys.
I think.
My.
Was.
Slime.
Where.
What?
Oh, we had.
A.
That.
Oh, hey.
Yes.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And for the.
Every year.
They do.
That.
Some.
You will not.
Great.
Something.
Yeah.
She's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Looks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's.
Yeah.
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 Is that right?
Yeah.
Thanks.
My.
Over.
Well, hey.
They.
Yeah.
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 Thank you.
Good.
Good.
Yeah.
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 That's all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm gonna be your.
Oh, I don't.
Yeah.
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 And then you know how to get.
From.
This place?
Which.
They're.
We got.
The.
He's.
He's.
Do you know how to keep it from packable?
Packable.
Yeah.
Right.
They can turn the volume.
While we go.
On the TV.
On the TV?
No.
And then it's off and down.
Off.
Down.
Okay.
Looks like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure.
Also.
They can turn the volume.
Five.
That's.
On that.
And the twenty minute.
Especially.
Oh, my.
Yeah.
Oh.
That's.
Yeah.
It's.
You think so?
I live with a TV.
I'm thinking it's out of that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's for the.
I'm.
The.
Try.
There they are.
We.
We.
So.
No.
No.
Oh, yeah.
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 Well.
With.
Sat.
Three.
Two.
You gotta make.
Four.
Five.
Eggs.
I'm.
So.
I was taking.
You then.
I mean.
We have.
Eagles for the.
Years.
Yeah, we don't.
Much than they.
All right.
Done.
Yes.
Okay.
That's all.
Good.
Yeah.
Amber was on that a long time ago.
She's.
Okay.
I don't.
Good.
Yeah.
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 I remember any of these.
But that's.
Yeah.
Seriously.
Around here, I just wanna.
Down.
Here they're all.
Sure.
Sure.
Oh, me and our tablet.
So.
This.
What?
I want to be very.
Right now.
It's.
Got.
That.
Like.
I don't know.
For.
First.
Wonder.
Me.
Uh.
Yeah.
She's got a nice little.
Problem.
But you are sending.
She's.
Sorry.
Any more of these sitting around?
I gotta give her an amber.
Um.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
I have.
Other.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Who.
Yeah.
Okay.
You.
We're.
Like.
It.
Where.
We're.
Had.
We're.
Be able.
To.
Like.
It.
Amber.
We.
We make sure these.
Get destroyed.
And.
Yeah.
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 Well.
The one.
Forty.
Twenty.
One.
Oh.
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 Someone was.
Right.
Yeah.
I know.
It's cold.
They.
Were.
That's.
Maybe the room full of people.
How?
Yeah.
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 Something.
Something.
Alright, we're.
Here.
We're.
I think we're.
Mark.
Oh, Mark's not in here.
So.
So.
Well.
They.
Uh.
He was talking to somebody in the hallway.
Maybe we'll have to go and.
None channel.
But.
On.
It.
Yeah.
Go.
Not.
He was.
Hot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we can actually.
That's.
On.
You're.
Oh.
I hope so.
It's bad.
Yes.
Hey.
Hey.
I've.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
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 I was.
Good.
For.
I.
Really.
Yeah.
So.
You.
Said.
I.
Sure.
I think.
Oh, that means.
You're.
You're.
Work.
Ever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've heard.
You.
You.
Run.
Yeah.
We can share.
Two more.
So.
We're.
Just.
Yeah.
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 I was gonna say.
It's the.
Elements.
Is.
We.
Yeah.
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 And.
Yeah.
They're just.
Well, it's.
The.
It's the ordinance.
So.
Suggestive.
It has.
Some.
Of.
Things.
I know.
I work.
You jump up.
And.
Right.
And I'm.
Have this.
I don't know.
Oh, yeah.
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 I was.
Yeah.
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 Okay.
I don't know.
What.
Okay.
So I've talked to legal.
Further county.
My.
Been.
And.
Very.
I've.
Several.
Oh, great.
Did.
Did I send you ones that I put together?
Okay.
No, I didn't.
Then they make sure.
You.
That was.
Three.
Other.
County.
It's.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're gonna get started with the pledge of allegiance.
So.
I pledge allegiance to the law.
I mean.
I take.
It's.
My.
Matter.
Super.
Resolved.
Or.
It stands.
One nation.
Under God.
And it is called.
With no regime and justice for all.
Alright, we're gonna get started with roll call. Mark.
Here.
Gwen.
Here.
Roberta.
Here.
Mike.
Here.
Howard.
Here.
Dale.
Here.
Jane.
Here.
Amber.
Here.
All here.
Robbie.
Robbie's here now.
All right.
Yeah.
But you didn't say it, so.
Alright, uh, approval of the minutes from July ninth. Have we got those straightened out yet?
Yes, and those were all sent out.
They are.
Good.
Okay, perfect. Uh, we have a motion for approving the minutes for July ninth.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for July ninth.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Alright, we have minutes from September tenth. We have a motion to pass the minutes from September tenth.
Make a motion.
Uh. We have a motion for Mark. Do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, the second is from Dale. I just reminder to the board, uh, when we make motions, we do need the same names for the. Um.
That was okay.
Did I not say that?
You did not.
Okay. All those in favor for the September tenth planning commission?
Aye.
Uh. Opposed? Alright, motion passes. Alright, agenda, uh, number five, hiring Stark County Building Inspector. Um, boy, we have been through. Quite a bit on this, uh, we have interviewed quite a few people, a lot of good people. I will mention that to all the folks out there. Um, and this was actually a really tough decision, and that's what took us a couple of months to get here. Uh, and I think it was because we have a lot of good candidates, a lot of good, kind, nice people that we've met. Um, and, and hopefully, um, we make a good decision if we make a decision tonight. Uh, we've got, uh, three candidates, candidate A, B, and C, uh, that we're considering. Uh, does the board have any discussion, or would you like to make a motion this evening?
I would make a motion that we. Move forward with candidate A. Contingent on his acceptance of the offer as well as a successfully completed background in, background in drug testing.
Okay, we have a motion from Roberta Lee, uh, for candidate A. Do we have a second? I'd.
Dale.
Second. Uh, Dale has made a second. All those in favor?
Uh.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Alright.
We have one opposed, uh, Howard actually didn't hear anything.
I said, uh, okay.
So. Five ayes and one nay for the record. Alright, so we've accepted candidate A, uh. Question to the board, do we want to announce who that is, or do we want to wait until, uh, they pass the background check?
I don't have preference all the way, but if somebody else has a preference.
I have no preference.
No.
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 I'm.
Good.
Name.
Mark says announce, let me. Howard, announce or don't announce?
Actually, let's just do it as a motion, and then we'll get.
I have.
No.
Preference. I'll make a motion to, uh, announce the name.
Okay, Mark has a motion to announce the name this evening. Do we have a second?
Yeah. I'll second it.
When seconds? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Alright, motion passes. Uh, John McCurry is the gentleman that we're gonna move forward with, uh, pending a background check. Um.
Drug.
Drug screen.
And.
Accept. And the acceptance of the offer. Alright, moving on to number six, and I'm gonna let Amber take the lead from here.
As we'll go over our monthly planning commission items, um, and our permits issued, inspections completed, then roll into code enforcement. Um, up here, we do have a chart with some of our September inspections completed. There was a total of a hundred inspections completed, um, out in the field and then the county. There's any questions, we have plenty of, um, information if anybody has any. I did remove, when we go to permits issued, I did remove the contractor registrations out of here. So we had fifty seven building permits for. The clinical electrical permits issued in the month of September. Eugene, do you have anything on any of those to speak on, or?
No.
Okay. Um. Planning Commission for the fees for permits and things taken in this month was seven thousand seven hundred thirteen. Um, permit summary just by month and types of permits, and you'll see what fees were taken in from up until now, until September. Anybody that's requesting a copy of this, I can get that to them. Um, code enforcement, um, Robbie does most of our code enforcements during June and July. We were short-staffed in the office, so those months have zero. Um, August, we're starting to pick up in September, so anytime there's a complaint in the county, please make sure to call into our code enforcement, and we'll get those logged. Um, we did have two items that we'd sent out certified letters on. We have received. Some communication back on the first one, um, a BZA application was filed, and ceasing of the rental was told that they were doing. Um, we're gonna have to send out our code enforcement to verify that. And then on safety, we have not received confirmation of the certified letter. Being received, so we're still waiting on that. Be something we'll hand off to discuss with the lawyer on the next steps. Um, we do have one other common nuisance property that's been a concern since twenty twenty-three. It is on Lombardi Lane. There are fines that have been imposed that have not been, um, paid yet, but we need a board's decision on moving forward with this next one and how to handle it. Robbie, if you want to discuss any of these, it's up there.
Um, the property has been like this for a couple of years, and the owner of the property is incarcerated, and the other owner has passed. So. I'm just trying to figure out what I do, since there is not an actual owner to accept that bill.
Anybody living in the dwelling, Robbie?
His.
But.
It was his wife, but she divorced and married somebody else.
Hmm.
So. Are taxes current?
Hmm. I'm not sure. I didn't set up. I didn't put a note online.
May I? Say something regarding this? We actually, Robbie, Ben, I'm Anthony, we, we've been in contact regarding the, uh, the issue here. We live across the street, um, and we're the ones that brought this, uh, brought this to the forefront, okay? Um. So the owner being incarcerated, the gentleman that owned it prior passing away. They've lived there. This has been. An absolute nuisance for the entire block, front, back, up and down. For this two years, longer than that as far as nuisance, but the, the. Property, the junk, the trash, the garbage, all of that has construed with the new husband, or however this plays out. We have reached out, and Robbie has done, communicated everything that she's possibly gone. We have gone as far as health department, getting them involved, seeing where that is, because there's not even trash pickup being done here. Okay, so they've got children in the house. Where's the trash going? All that's gonna do is drive.
Witness on burning trash.
Like, we're just driving down not only property values, but this is going on seven years, uh, six years of living here, and it's either been. Doors getting kicked in, you know, sheriff's department order, trash fills up or something for this amount of time. I'm here tonight, we're here tonight, asking y'all, what are we doing and how are we gonna make it right? We need this to be handled, and I'm trying to do these things the right way and follow all of the different channels that are being allowed. But every time, I get the same answer. Talking to an attorney, talking to the attorney, talking to this guy, get in touch with the attorney. Oh, it's down here in Winemac. Oh, nope, they've got a new one now. So you can understand where our frustration's coming. We have to literally walk out of our house, look at this every day. You guys do not. So I am bringing this, and I'm asking, what is, what are we gonna do? How do we get this rectified, and how do we move forward?
So. I know. Since I'm not familiar with this case, it looks like this one started before preemie. Um, so you said that. The owner is incarcerated, so who's living in the home now?
The Y, well, it could be X.
Hey, for X.
Wife.
Yeah.
Okay.
And is, does she, is she, I'm just curious, do we know, is she like on this, um, on the house loan, on the? So there's only one owner assigned to the home?
One owner, well, there's two owners, one passed and one is incarcerated.
So she's just kinda living in this house for.
Mm-hmm.
Break.
I imagine.
My next question to you, counselor.
Yes, sir.
Well, we don't have to help these people out.
Let's say preemie, but, uh, I appreciate Roberta, what you, what you said there. Uh, candidly, what you need to do right now is give them an ultimatum, whether they're, the owner's in prison or, or not, you could still move forward. So at this point, I would give them, one, an ultimatum, two, it sounds like a health and wellness check based on some of the things that are being described here. And number three is after we get, after the ultimatum, nothing's done. If there needs to be a lien assessed against the property to preserve all the costs that we've incurred to date, that should be done ASAP, and then beyond that, injunctive relief to access the property, which if the owner's incarcerated, should be pretty easy. We get in there, we clean it, we slap that legal cost against them, if they don't pay it within a certain amount of time, then you foreclose on it.
So I guess for sake of discussion of the board, um. I don't know, could we do a motion for Nathan to be able to move forward with Amber and to do exactly what he just described? Do we have a motion from the board?
I'll make a motion that Nathan do everything he just described.
Yeah.
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 Yeah. With, um, the property located at sixty-seven fifty-one South Lombardi Lane, Mounts India.
Okay, we have a motion from Roberta Lee.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Uh, we have a second from Mark. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Can you all, Amber?
Yeah, this is just some of the nuisances, and I'm sure these are all your calls and, and letters and documented.
Hmm.
Um, next up, we did have up for discussion, and I was Stark County Building Permits. Everyone should have a general small talk with. Nope. Should be coming up. So we have our permits. Um, I think we allowed twenty minutes for this. We did start the meeting a little bit late. There are some. Different costs, and I don't know if we want us to put a proposal together, would maybe be the easiest of taking all these local counties, showing what the difference is, and maybe coming with an average. But wanted to bring it to the board, that we do have some houses filling up, and there's minimal fees. We also seem to be underneath some counties on other items. These were just kind of the quick fives that I did a comparison for.
Start counting. Anybody at all? Impartial crap. Alright. Amber, turning it back over to you.
Alright, so some of the business that's came in this month from the public. Um, and things that we have up on deck is a solar Hoosier Solar Permit Renewal. Carbon capture discussion, uh, discussion, solar ordinance draft progress, so data center. Moratorium, uh, we do have a certificate of occupancy to discuss, and then also another concern on. Uh, forty-one fifty-one Bowl Drive, so I'm gonna run through each of those. Um, first up is a Hoosier Solar Permit Renewal. Um, their permit does expire when they are requesting to renew it. So I'm gonna make sure we've brought this up to the board.
I have a question, yeah, how is it expired? When I, I remember when the permit is issued, it was issued for three years.
Their placard was issued with the date of it.
The expiration is wrong on the placard. So which one do, I mean, to me, it'd go with whatever's in the computer, right?
The system goes for a year, that is the computer that generates the placard.
And Nathan, I know you've been working on this and wanna give us a good legal, um, understanding. So if you wouldn't mind filling us in on what you've discovered.
So we received this communication, uh, mid-month. I've had opportunity, and I believe they're both here this evening. We've got Nick in the back as well as Attorney Metzl. Good to see you both this evening. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. Uh, the request was that they be able to renew for an additional two years. Uh, what Nick and what Andy have shared with me. Is that they've been diligently working in the background on this. There is a lot that goes into a development of this magnitude. I'm actually in a request that they share a little bit as to what's going on, so I think that's part of the need. For renewal has to be shown to renew. But in looking at what was passed a year ago. Uh, as we all know, permits are good for one year. It appears here that there was a permit issued for one year. And also accompanying it was the statement that this permit may be renewed for three years, so an additional say two years. To commence construction, subject to unforeseen PJM slash ESO interconnection delays and while construction is ongoing. So their request is that they have an opportunity to renew for two years. Uh, I think it's important for the board to hear from them as to what work has been ongoing to show that construction. Has commenced, that construction is ongoing. And at that point, you can make a decision if you wanna renew for one year, or if you go for the full. Two years, so we like to bring them in nice and close, so. Good to see you guys tonight.
Good to see you.
Well, take it from, uh, here, Nick, where you guys at in the project?
Yeah, thank you so much for the record, Nick Barb, connect with Andy Metzl, uh, who's your solar in task. Um, yeah, like, like the attorney said, and like has been said previously. Um, we're just here to update you on our project. We're not kinda sure why we're on the agenda, consistent with the. Uh, previous permit renewals for, uh, Doral and Nextera, uh, this is a ministerial act. Now, I'm not an attorney. Andy described that to me, that that's not Bruce Bennett, that's not a minister. That's, that's just a function that we need to, uh, issue this. There's not a, an adjudication to, to look at. And so it's, it's just a contract, we're kind of reviewing that we've had with the county since October tenth of last year. So, um, uh, since, uh, our permit was initially, uh, issued. We've secured permits with the Indiana Department of Transportation in Norfolk Southern, across both of their lines. Uh, and continued progress with Myso and PJM on our projects. North, uh, Bend and Stark Central to continue along with them. Uh, we've continued discussions with, uh, the utilities, uh, that, uh, we will plug into. But as the initial permit notes, uh, Myso and PJM are continuing to experience the. Ungodly long delays that, uh, we all know too well. Um, I would love to jump the line with Myso and PJM. Uh, but we can't do so, and so if they will not let us plug into the grid until, uh, another two years from now, three years from now. Uh, we can't go to construction early to build a, a solar farm that will be sitting, uh, dormant, uh, as, as no one else would either. I can answer any other additional questions, though, for you all.
I just wanna make sure I am understanding, so we're just looking for the three, the initial three years.
Yep.
Okay. That's what I thought, okay.
Well, I guess one could look at it this way, I mean, I think what Nick shares is that their perceptions that this was granted automatically for. Three years, I think in the system, Amber's indicated that it was one year, which is typically. When I look at the application, again, it wasn't here a year ago, but it says permit may, may be renewed for. Three years and the communication that was sent in by Hoosier Sho- Solar, what they're asking for is their next two years, so to speak. My candid opinion, what I think is reasonable, what typically you see is that if there's opportunities for renewal. You do it one year at a time, let's stay on task, let's stay in good communication. You bring Nick in, bring Andy back in to say, this is what's going on. These are the hurdles we're surpassing, we're active, we're not just sitting by, because. It's wording I would have chosen differently, but I think the intention was with the permit that was issued a year ago. Is that there needs to be ongoing construction or efforts to construct that are taking place. For this permit to be valid and ongoing in order to be renewed for up to three years, so that's the purpose for this dialogue this evening.
And, and we think that's reasonable for the record, if that's.
Yeah.
What you guys need.
Yep. So my suggestion, we recommend to renew it for one year, subject to the existing terms.
Well, I'll leave it up to the board for any further discussion. Are there any type of motion from the board?
But that, what you, what you're saying, councilors, they can come back a year from now and renew. They're showing us progress is made, and they can renew it for extended another year.
Correct, that's what I originally agreed to, was three years, subject to ongoing construction efforts. Subject to ESO delays, et cetera, which is what Nick outlined.
Nathan, can I clarify just one point? I think that, um, unless this. Commission, which, you know, you, you can decide on your own what you wanna do, but unless you're deviating from your own rules. That this really is a plan commission director decision, and it is a ministerial act as, as Nick already mentioned. And if you wanna vote on it, that's up to, you know, could, that's your discretion to do so, but that would be a deviation from what's been done in the past. With all other solar permits that have been issued and renewed and renewed and renewed over the years, so I, I'm just. Just throwing that out there, that it would be something different, um, which is a little surprising to us, but. You know, we're not, we're not hearing angst or anything like that. We, we feel like we're excited about the project and wanna keep moving forward, so. We just need to get the permit renewed and we're trying to do.
How did this, uh, become that they needed it renewed in the other companies didn't? How, how did this, how did this get put on the agenda as far as?
There were no notes like this on the other permits, I believe, is one of the differences, Howard, and this is just from my knowledge, but, um. And I think also maybe the difference too, and correct me if I'm wrong, is there was physically. Construction in those cases, no?
No.
Now, so Doral had, or Doral and Nextera, they hadn't started.
Yeah, they both experienced.
The same thing, yeah. So, and I think doesn't IC code generally, there's like a three years for the Indiana, no?
No, no, that, that doesn't, that governs, that you can't suddenly change on them.
In the middle of three years.
Correct.
Okay.
But that doesn't grant three years, and that's why it's so important anytime that you pass a project, especially one as monumental as this. Specificity, what is expected in a timeline for construction. Is so integrally important, because now what we're looking at is what gives Andy and I a job every day. Which is what did these words mean when neither she nor I were there? And what I've given you is, was what I think is a reasonable interpretation. I don't know what's happened with your past projects. I just know looking at this project right here, you've got a permit that says up to three years. Subject to construction efforts, possible ESO delays. So what I'm looking for this evening is for someone to put on the record that there actually is construction efforts ongoing. And there actually are delays, and that's been represented, and that's been preserved for the record. So they've got two more years to keep moving, so.
So what's the objection, why shouldn't we get, uh, instead of renewing it for one year, what's the objection?
To just.
Councilor to renew it for the next two.
Well, if, if I'm in public policy and I'm representing a municipality. And we're wanting to quote spur action from a developer. Why would you wanna give them a longer period of time? This way you maintain a leash, so to speak, over what's going on in your county? From a public policy perspective.
So then your recommendation is, we, we make a motion for the year, knowing that after that they can renew again. Based on that initial three years.
Hoosier, whether it's someone building a house, you wanna keep somebody on task.
Got it.
Yep.
So I'm, I, just a point of clarification, or would you be making a motion to make the recommendation to your plan commissioner? Or is that, is that person no longer the person making the decisions about permit renewals? That makes sense?
I'm not your plan commissioner.
For the, for the, I think this one's correct, I think this one comes back to the board based upon what we've got here. I mean, I see what you're saying, Andy, but. For the loose language that I've got here, I'm more comfortable with this board making that decision, so, yeah.
I do, just trying to be clear, so we understand.
I'm gonna go with the recommendation of the attorney, that I wanna make that motion for a one-year renewal. And have you come back in a year, and as long as they're making the progress like he's summoned, so I would like to make the motion.
Alright, Mark has made a motion to continue on for a year, uh, per the attorney's recommendation. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Uh, we have a second from Howard. All those in favor?
Alright.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you.
So next up, we had discussed some carbon capture discussion. Um, I did a little bit of research from just some counties that had some things. I don't think anybody has. Come to our county with an actual plan or anything, but we were wanting to draft a moratorium for it, so that we'd be prepared for it. So just an update possibly on that. We're still continuing down that path with.
I think, uh, Nathan had started some, uh, language here for us.
Of course, here. I came.
Thank you.
I brought seven, I, I need to bring more, I apologize today.
I can share with one, or, yeah.
Yeah, I'll share with one, or Howard.
So this is the carbon, okay.
Yep.
And this is just for the moratorium, sorry, you'll, I'll let you.
And this is a, a recommendation to the commissioner.
So you are not a legislative body, you are an advisory body to the commissioners, so you cannot create ordinance here, right? But you can make a strong recommendation and certify one to them eventually. And what we have before you here this evening, from what I understand, there was conversation last month. Regarding a concern, uh, carbon capture is becoming a newer item here across the states. Uh, Indiana passed a law in two thousand twenty-two recognizing and starting to create a framework for carbon, uh, sequestration, they call it. But we need to recognize that we don't have right now in our county as part of our ordinances, we don't recognize this whatsoever, this is brand new, right? So one of the things that you wanna do as a county is to say, hey, let's put a pause on anyone coming before us before we have any good. Um, ordinances addressing it, so that we can get our ducks in a row. You would not be the first county that humbly says. We're a little bit behind where the technology is, right? Uh, there's a couple, I think Cas, White, Monroe, or just a couple other ones that I saw. In researching this. And so what you do is you make a motion that you wanna place a moratorium for a period of time. On any of these projects until we've had an opportunity to develop an ordinance, and this is a recommendation to your board of commissioners. To do that, you'd make a recommendation to publish this, so we'd have to have a public meeting next month. And once that's done, then we can officially pass this on to the commissioners. Um, basically, look at the bottom there. Uh, number one reads, there is now imposed a temporary moratorium on the issuance of an improvement location permit for any structure related to any carbon sequestration project. Including not limited to any carbon dioxide transmission line. Carbon dioxide injection wells, storage facility, and all appretended facilities in all zoning districts in the unincorporated areas. Of Stark County pending adoption and ordinance amending the Stark County zoning ordinance to provide regulations related to carbon sequestration projects within. The county. So that in essence would be the prohibition that we're recommending for the board commissioners. So if this is indeed something that you wanna move forward on, again, as Amber's identified, no one's approached us. We don't know if it's looming, if it's not looming, but this is an increasingly relevant item that we need to be in front of. So this would be for one year.
Okay, that was gonna be my next question, so should that, should it say a year in here somewhere?
I thought I put it in here, uh, if not, that's why you have rough drafts, it was certainly on my mind.
I might have missed it, cuz I'm reading it on the spot, but yeah, I didn't, cuz that was my next question was for how long, I don't think it has.
Oh, no, I thought I had it in there, but that should be a number one.
Yeah, and so it should be up.
Yep, every moratorium for a period of twelve months.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now, I, I, I'm gonna ask the question, I'm just curious, um, from everybody else, so we've got this. And then I believe you're also going to share with us the one for the data centers.
Yep.
So I guess, and I'm assuming that one will be a year as well.
Correct, I just added it.
I'm gonna look at this board and say, we're having a heck of a time getting the ordinance for solar written. In twelve months. I, I don't know, I mean, i- i- just talking aloud, these can be extended. Should we're, should we still be in the middle of trying with two coming, right? And needing to work on two ordinances of this size.
You can.
Okay, that would be my only question, then, it's just the timing on it.
And to clarify, you would need a vote to move forward with this. Can we still move forward with it with the addendum of the one year?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, as modestly.
Cuz we're, we're thirty days for another meeting, I hate to.
Yeah, no, we have plenty of time to publish, absolutely, yep.
So do we need a, a motion from a board member to move forward with this?
Yeah, it'd be a motion to recommend the publication of this for the eventual, uh, recommendation to the Stark County Plan Commission. Or Stark County Board of Commissioners.
Any discussion from the board? I'm gonna miss, uh, do we have a motion from the board?
I'll make that motion. But he spoke of.
Okay, uh, Gwen is making a motion to, uh, Nathan's recommendation. And move forward with this to, uh, eventually get to moving it to the commissioners.
Correct.
To a public hearing, right?
Yep, public hearing, next month's meeting.
Yes.
Alright, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, Dale has made a second. All those in favor?
Alright.
Opposed? Motion passes.
So I will work with Amber, then, we'll follow thirty-six, seven, four, six, oh, four for publication, and we'll get it on file, Amber.
Yeah, and that, that's passing with the, the twelve-month, uh, addition.
Addition, yes, scribbler addition, yep.
Amber?
Hey, and we also have a solar ordinance draft, just an update on that. I know we sent in our concerns to get our draft, so just an update on. That, or when we'll get to review it.
Yep. So that was received after your last meeting, I appreciate that. I've spoken with legal counsel for two other counties, received copies that they either have been working on or have passed. Those researched two additional ones, so I've got that whole packet assembled. My goal is to get to you guys by November. A working draft, so that we can take a look at that, and maybe have a study session thirty minutes before our next meeting to talk through it, so.
Okay, um, any chance, uh, it would be done sooner than our next meeting?
I will, I will certainly try.
And I only bring that up because the moratorium went in in, is it February?
February, yeah.
And I, we did promise, uh, some, some of our good folks that are building, that we would try to keep pace on this.
Yeah.
So, cuz once we pass it, correct them thirty-day, well, first hearing, right, here it is. Yeah.
Yep, you got permission. Alright, it sounds like by end of October is, I'll have it to everybody.
Okay.
And it, just a question, can that be sent to us in advance, so that, okay, perfect, that way we don't have, we're not sitting in a meeting for six hours going through it.
Yep, that's why I'd suggest a study session beforehand.
Okay, perfect, sure.
Uh, this is Chris Klein of Doral, and I, I just, um, uh, wanna know if there's any input that, uh, we can provide to. The attorney and see that, uh, that we have a concept that we'd like to maybe have you all consider, uh, as part of the ordinance development process.
I would think we would want that sent to the board.
Sent to the board?
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll be sent to the board, once it's sent to the board, then the public can request a copy of it.
No, he's, he's asking, so he's with Solar, so he, they've got some suggestions, and he's wondering if they can send those in, so they would send that to the board, right?
Yeah, if you wanna send to Amber, she could pass along to me.
Okay.
Yep.
Alright, anything else on the solar ordinance draft?
Is that solar and battery storage, just to be clear? Cuz it was supposed to be both.
Well, they were, they're listed separately, two down.
Listed separately, it's all part of that, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, just make sure we weren't forgetting that.
Okay, um, I did have data center listed on here too, and I just sued with our draft, doing the same thing.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. So being passed around is a similar moratorium draft. This one's a bit more unique, um. There have been some efforts throughout the state to place a moratorium on a data center. Um, Indiana law hasn't quite caught up to the massive data centers that are starting to come about, whether it's in Indiana or any other state. The word that you see frequently used is hyperscale. Indiana law doesn't specifically define hyperscale, so you see a efforted in this to create a definition, so we have some clarity. Here moving forward. Uh, so look at number one there, hyperscale data project, uh, that's what I've created as our word of choice. Shall be understood to be a building structure in excess of five thousand square feet, whose primary purpose and design is to house data center equipment or software. Which is used for processing, storing, retrieval, or other communication of data. Goal there isn't to say you've got a large school or a large building that has, you know, five hundred square feet of data in it, no, the purpose of it larger than five thousand square feet. That's what we're defining to be a hyperscale data project. Number two, there would then be imposed a temporary moratorium. Like your verter twelve months, on the issuance of an improvement location permit for any structure related to any hyperscale data project, including not limited to any related storage facility. These are words that you see frequently used with data centers, water conservation systems. Cooling systems of data centers or buildings in all appretended facilities in all zoning districts. In the unincorporated areas of Stark County pending adoption of an ordinance amending our ordinance. That is my similar recommendation as to the prior one. To A, move forward with publication of this at our next scheduled meeting date. For the B, subsequent purpose of recommend, recommendation to the Stark County Board of Commissioners.
Alright, any discussion from the board?
I'd like to discuss that, uh, some discussion. So, I don't know how many people have been by the brand-new data center, the Amazon building right now in the Port County. Um, the Port and St. Jill County are seeing a massive amount of. Massive amount of employment, um, out of town, in town, tons of money coming into those areas. That if we pass something like this, that Stark County may not see those areas, may not see that money. So while we sit here and bitch about Stark County not having opportunities for people. It services for people that we can't provide. Um, I think it's something to definitely discuss. I don't have a problem with the one side of it with water and stuff like that, things have been discussed in those areas. But another end of that coin is, is growth. And the question becomes, what's Stark County gonna look like in ten years? Where's the growth gonna be? You've got, um, place outside of Hamlet that's just sitting vacant, that's been sitting there for god knows how long and hasn't produced anything. And that was supposed to be this, or it's supposed to be that. And as we continue to do things like this and say, we don't want that growth. We're gonna be particular about what we do. So I, I really feel that this is a, a road that needs to be discussed more before we just put a moratorium on it and say, we're. We don't want anything to do with data centers, when you do this, you, you send that clear message to, uh, places like Amazon and. Microsoft, I do know they're involved with the one in the Port County, I've talked to some of their planning commission, uh, individuals there, and they're. They're, uh, kind of excited to see some of that growth, so I just would like the people on the board and everybody in this community to understand what that's gonna do when you do this.
I mean, I guess my only concern would be that we don't have an ordinance, so I mean, we have to get an ordinance put in place. And, no, I just don't want it to be rushed like what we've done in the past, so, you know, I think, and for me. I agree, I think that, you know, I have concerns with the data centers, just to be transparent, I'm not opposed to them. Uh, with the right situations, right, again, want water, how do we handle that? How do we handle the cooling, all of those things, where are we going to allow them? You know, where won't we allow them? So for me, personally, I do think we at least need time to figure out what that looks like. You know, where do we want, where are we going to allow them? I know there was an email sent out to the board with some information around it, but. Again, I just think we need some time, you know, hopefully we can get it done in less than twelve months, but. For me, I'm not comfortable. Not having something in place to make sure that. If and when we move forward, we're not running from behind the eight ball again. And rushing to get it done, because we have somebody knocking on the door, trying to get it through, so. I'm not, I'm not opposed to them, I just do think that.
Be the one that complained about stuff not, services not being there, about the public, don't you believe that the public deserves a lot of these services that are in another county?
I'm not saying that we don't want them, I, I don't think I ever said that we didn't want them, I think we just need to have an ordinance in place, and we don't have one.
But that moratorium sends a clear message that means that we don't want, that's what that sent. That's my question.
I don't, I'm not opposed to the growth in the county either, but I'm, I'm with Roberta on this, as far as we need to be prepared. And not have things thrown at us that we're not prepared for, we have nothing at all, no documentation, no research, no anything, I, I feel like we need. A clear ordinance before we make.
I, I, I think the key word here, Mark, in the counselor's preparation is the word temporary. Uh, it, it, you know, an ordinance imposing a temporary moratorium. I, I don't, I don't think anything, this intends to be permanent necessarily, but the word temporary, I think says a lot here that. And, and I agree with you on most of everything you're saying, but the word temporary means that. That gives us time to, to get the proper ordinance, or no ordinance in place. Temporary means a lot to me, it's a, it wouldn't be a permanent moratorium, a temporary moratorium. That make sense to you?
It makes sense to me, I just know that there's, there are vacant pieces of opportunities in the county, and, and if that would be the. The one place they would stick a data center, that would be, okay, well, we have a moratorium, well, then we're gonna move it to a different county. That's all I'm asking.
Would you be opposed to a six-month, oh, all, everybody, rather than a twelve-month?
Yeah.
And we prioritize, from an ordinance perspective, Dale, I mean.
I, I know that historically, um, our legal advice has been six months is not a lot of time.
Right.
Yeah, there's just a lot of things, and I'm not saying couldn't get it done in six months, have that goal, but.
Hearings, and yeah, it does take a while.
I, I guess, I guess asking you, um, our attorney, well. At this point, you're seeing all this going on, how many of these are you seeing?
Uh, there was quite a bit of effort on the carbon sequestration, probably a similar on the hyperscale. The difficulty with hyperscale is that. When people are making, when companies are making the application. The question is, what zoning are you putting in? Does it fall underneath B three, does it fall underneath M one? Does it not fall underneath any of them, is the big issue that people are having. Because when you've got M one, right? Then you've got side variances that you can't have buildings so close to, say, schools or this or that, or other avenues. And then the ordinances are frequently behind on, well, where's the water gonna come from? And then beyond that's gonna be, how do you charge for the water usage, cuz they can.
I know they use tons of water, yeah.
But to your point. This is where our society's at, this is where we're headed, and these provide wonderful jobs, this provides a wonderful tax base. So you wanna encourage it, but you want proper managed growth. So I think you can, there, there's two ways to do it. One is to say we need a, a brief hiatus. But two, my question to you would be, how are you as a county signaling to the public, to developers? To big business that we're open for business.
That's what I'm, now you see where I'm going.
So I think there's a way to, 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 to talk two ways, right? So I would entertain for you guys and at a county level to say, what are we doing to project? To those outside our counties, say, come on in and invest in our county, invest in our citizens. So I think what you do is you'd make a temporary, that'd be my suggestion, but at the same time, I'd encourage you to say, how do you project outward to all these companies? To say, come on in, we welcome you with good managed growth. That's, I think, how you bridge both of those gaps.
That's what I'm concerned about.
Anything else from the board? Alright, this isn't required, but I did see a couple hands, I'm gonna be respectful for that, but only a few minutes here, um.
The only thing I would say is, if you're trying to project that, is, is maybe in the moratorium, you also say that. That though we work going forward on this new ordinance for this type of development, whichever occurs first. You know, happen, that might make signal.
Uh, Austin, who's representing Abey Energy, independent power producer and uh data center developer. Uh, so we're just exploring Stark County right now for a data center project, and I might be the right person to answer what please sell your questions. Well, I'm the power guy, I'm not in charge of water, but if you're concerned about the water or cleaning or something else, uh, we can. So I'm leaving in, you know, talking details about. Uh, a data center project, and so the one we are planning to build in northwestern Indiana will be up to five billion dollars. And we'll create up to, again, three hundred full-time jobs with high-end. Sellers. And I think if you put a ban for a data center, even for the sixth month, it will push us to move to another state, is that, oh, sorry, county. So, and by the way, one more thing, uh, after we secured the land, it takes up three to five years. To complete the diligence before we start building data center. So, yeah. We we secure. Company, this water company, it's up to five years. Finish and then start building data center, so.
Sir, what was your name again?
Austin. And I think we had a short conversation.
So after you've built a facility that costs five billion dollars. How many permanent jobs are given?
Uh, yeah, it's a little bit up to three hundred, and I'm, yeah, and for us, it will be uh thousands of constructing.
Under under a full-time basis?
Yes, sir. So we need electrical engineers, software engineers, technicians and all that.
Now, are are all data centers the same? I mean. Do some just collect data or do some data centers collect data and then do developments? That employ other people?
Um, there are like two types of data centers, the first one, traditional, one collected data and like processing AI, uh. It's less than tools, the second one is like Bitcoin mining, we don't deal with Bitcoin mining facilities.
All right, uh, anything else from the board? All right, I'm gonna remind the board that this is not actually uh going into place, this still has to go to the commission. Um, so just reminded that if this does get passed here this evening, uh, is not a doing beetle, it does have to go to permission. Um, any decision from the board?
I would make a motion that we move forward with publication. Um, knowing that somebody is looking, I mean, we don't even know where we're gonna allow data center zoning. From a zoning perspective, and I think that all has to be ironed out as a county.
So can you clarify your motion?
Um, I would make a motion that we move forward with. Publication of the twelve proposed twelve-month moratorium. On hyperscale data center.
Okay, we have the motion, you have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion as second, all those in favor?
All right.
Fine. Opposed?
Bye.
Uh, motion passes uh five to one.
Mr. Chairman. I might suggest maybe appointing a delegation to meet with the gentleman to my right, I think that'd be a wise and prudent move.
Um, we could potentially schedule a TRC meeting. I don't know what our schedules look like, um. What we could do is.
We can try to coordinate with the board.
With Amber.
Okay.
And uh, Austin.
Yes.
And just so you know, Austin, those are public. Um, typically pretty quiet from the crowd, though.
Next, we have a certificate of occupancy to discuss it. Eighty-six twenty-three South Main Street in Aura, um, the permit has expired as of eight twenty-two thousand four. I currently have no inspections on file, not just, I was not able to find any. Um, permits have been renewed from two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty-four. Um, Eugene did go out and visit the property this week. And I believe we have. Um. Mister Ward in here, if you'd like to come up and state your name, because we probably have a couple of questions. Um, but Charles Ward is asking for us to issue a certificate of occupancy.
Ma'am, you're welcome.
For his remodeling. That's been completed on the house.
I'll see for her.
Eugene, do you wanna discuss what out there are our thoughts on it? Did you say remodeling or was this new construction?
Um, it's a new structure.
New structure, okay, I just wanted to understand that.
So I was asked to go out and and. Visit with the folks, which I did, I believe it's yesterday, wasn't it? And we we walked, we walked to into the house and um. But I had no intent of performing an inspection, I just wanted to see the. The home and want to talk to the folks here, um. I I saw quality construction, uh, what I. Saw. As a finished product would be what I would do as a final inspection, so I just eyeballs on uh. Code materials, the the receptacles were in proper spots, there was a proper number. Ground faults were in place, the smoke detectors are in place. Um, everything seemed to be in accordance with with codes. However, saying that, there's no record of any inspections. Charles says the inspections were done and he named inspectors that did. The inspections, uh, he has no record of those, we have no record of any inspections. So I can't issue an occupancy permit based on all that information because of. I think the house is quality built by the gentleman here, but. Thank you. I I don't know how to move forward.
And our. Did you and I communicate?
Yes, that is.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we.
I'm his wife.
Okay, understood. And these permits have been going on for some time.
Yes. If you want to know more about it, I just wanted to talk to you or talk to you on the phone. Because he was at work and it was an opportunity that I could offer somebody that. I want to get into my house as soon as humanly possible.
When, when did the permits start?
Uh. Two thousand fifteen or two thousand sixteen.
Okay.
Uh. Crazy part is Amber was nice enough. She called over to the health department because you have to have a receptor tank and leach field inspected also. They have record of that being inspected. So from that point on. I cannot honestly answer. All I can do is give you my word. That everything was inspected. Because when you dig the hole and you pour your footings for your house. The footings need to be inspected before you can do anything else. And then as you're moving on, you gotta have your rough framing and everything inspected. And after rough framing, you go on to your plumbing and electrical inspection. Because you have to have that inspected, otherwise NIPSCO will not even come out to your house to hook up electric. And the plumbing and electrical inspection was done by Terry Stevens, who was a previous inspector.
Yeah, well, and and there's. Um, you know, my initial thought is we wouldn't have kept renewing the permits if there wasn't construction going on.
We renew a lot of them with just layers, just because they're renewing it, they didn't get it finished, you know. We are stopping on this project because and they get it renewed for another year. Um, all the other permits that I've found over the years, there's inspections done, even renewals, I went through. Every permit from two thousand sixteen to twenty-four and I have no inspection listed. Um, what was concerning those, um, Boz had put a note in there last year in May. That there was no inspections completed.
Um, I actually talked to the person, cause that's his mom, she has no idea. What in the world you guys are talking about, she never talked to anybody. Even though she is not here to testify that, she told us she had no idea what you guys are talking about, she didn't talk to you guys.
Do you have any photos of construction, um, taking pictures along the way?
Fortunately, not, no, I do not.
Okay.
Yeah, I had asked if he could come up with any of the past green tags, any pictures from the construction like during the process.
Yeah.
Cause I was trying to get some.
Wall, um, anything.
When was the permit for the septic?
That was a.
Or that, not the permit, the 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 inspection.
There's not been. That was, I think, two thousand sixteen when Mike.
So it was two thousand sixteen, when did you start the construction outside of the? I mean, you got the septic in two thousand sixteen.
Shortly after the that.
Okay, and then when did you finish?
Uh, about two to three weeks ago, finally.
Okay.
Did you build the house yourself, sir?
Yes.
Any subcontractors?
No. No, I've been fortunate enough, I did, I was in the trades for almost twenty years, so I've done. Just about everything. And thankfully with YouTube and talking with previous inspectors. Just to make sure on certain codes or things of that nature is how I've done everything. I apologize, I. I should know better, take pictures. Although I didn't think of it. Because it's, yes, it's been quite time consuming. But it's also a money factor too. If there's anything you'd like to know about the house as far as how it's constructed, I will gladly explain the best I can for you.
So you spent nine years building it?
Yes.
And you never had it inspected once or just miscellaneous here?
According to the county, it was never inspected.
But he's saying that it was, Terry was out there, he said.
Terry Stevens had done my electrical and rough plumbing inspection.
I'd probably have to do the electrical just to get the power turned on.
Yes.
Does NIPSCO run the power? De- depending upon seeing an actual green bird?
Um, other county has to communicate with NIPSCO or R E M C that the inspection's been completed before supplying power.
That's just, that's just the service, that's not the interior. You have to have the meter base. And you have to have the main disconnect within five foot of that meter base, and then they'll. They'll hook hook up the the power, they have nothing to do with inside the door.
But my question is, when we call R E M C to say, show up and connect. Does R E M C require us to show proof of an inspection at that point?
But that would qualify just for nature.
But that was, yeah.
So that really doesn't tell us anything if R E M C says we have this.
Yeah.
That means that the meter base was inspected.
Right, like on my house, the house wasn't even built yet, we had the pedestal put out and we had the electric.
Had to inspect the leader base installation prior to R N C or NIPSCO connector.
Mm-hmm. So you're asking us for what, a certificate of occupancy?
Yes.
Were you ever red tagged?
No. I had a, like I said, thankfully with YouTube. And being able to call up the inspectors and talk to them and say, hey, I have a question. How do you want me to proceed or how can I proceed? That's what I was basing it off of.
Is there a foundation?
Yes, it is a.
Be underneath or is there a drywall in the the basement?
No, it's a four-foot crawl space.
So you can see up in the droids?
Yes. He did, I, he did have the panel, protective panel base off, it's a two hundred amp panel with a sub panel. And uh, the wiring is uh very neat, everything is perfectly labeled. Right-sized wires match with the breakers and so forth, so. If he did the electric, he did a good job, at least on the panel, which is what I can, on the part I could see.
Well, I'm just gonna weigh in here and say, I have a lot of respect for people that take on projects like this and stay committed to it for nine years, I mean. It's not easy to do that kind of stuff, especially all by yourself. Um. You know, he clearly had some communication or like the attorney said, NIPSCO wouldn't turn the power on R E M C, whoever it was.
Uh, I have NIPSCO.
Okay.
Um, also, I had talked with Boz last year and kind of explained the situation to him. And he was willing to come out and inspect it when it was done. But he couldn't guarantee that he would approve anything being he couldn't actually see.
In the walls now.
Is this your forever home or do you plan on selling it?
Not my forever home. One thing I can say. I will gladly put my house up against any house built in Stark County. And I can guarantee you, my house will still be standing before another house will be. And the reason I say that is because of the fact. I have real plywood where I need real plywood on the floors and the roof. I also have real plywood on the corners of the house. Uh, I was also told there is joy singers. I call them joy singers up on a rafters or hurricane straps.
And it could. You have attic access?
Yes.
I was just gonna say, if if.
I have. I have no problem going out and doing a thorough final inspection on the thing, I'm just reluctant to put my signature on and document that. I had nothing to do with until the final.
But can you document all this in the system, the the situation?
Yeah, we can put all kinds of notes in there, I was just thinking of. Normally, when you sell a house or buy a house, you get your third-party inspector to do an overall inspection, if we could possibly suggest that. Or a third party and issue a certificate of.
No, what I would suggest is, the question was asked, is this your forever home? And it may be, and I appreciate what you're saying, sir, but. The issue is, is Bob and Suzie by in five years from now, right? And something happens and a guy like me or a gal like Andy comes along. And says, I'm gonna take the the county to task because you verified that it was in good shape, right?
Mm-hmm.
So that's the difficulty that we're in, so if we are gonna move forward, I do think it's very wise that we thoroughly. Look at it, but I think there should be a miscellaneous instrument recorded against this property. That says this certificate of occupancy is done with a void in its history. And we can't guarantee or verify there's missing records here, this is on you. And that way, we can be assured that a future buyer is going to be put on notice of what we've discussed here. Because I don't think it should be on the county, because the future buyers have to talk to the county, but if we record it against the property. A simple miscellaneous instrument. Then it preserves it for posterity in public record that this happened.
So basically, we would issue.
Yeah. That that would.
Have Gene do his due diligence first.
Yep.
If what he can see documented, well, what he can and cannot see.
Yep.
Issue the certificate of occupancy with the, what did you call it?
Instrument recording. This allows Dean to sleep well at night because. He's in a difficult spot, unless we wanna authorize Gene to cut open drywall on a few spots he think are appropriate.
Um. Would it be appropriate to request a new permit? This permit's been expired for over a year.
It should be renewed at minimum.
Mm-hmm, I agree with the renewal because it was, and we did discuss that because it went um past the expiration, I just don't want. The renewal thing, when you can call me inspections now, but you still can't visually see.
Oh, but no renewals need to happen before they expire.
Which it failed. Be renewed before next year.
So that's why I'm suggesting would we need a whole new permit?
Yeah, to have an inspection take place on it.
Right.
I would ask if possible. For me to buy a new permit, that's, I don't remember the exact cost, but that's almost six hundred dollars. Right now, I do not have six hundred dollars. Is it possible? You grant me a renewal?
Yeah.
And we can continue? I understand there's no inspections on record. But with that contingency. I'm asking for leniency.
This is a lot of stretch here. That's my two cents.
What's the cost for the old permit, Amber?
Twenty-five dollars for a renewal, I mean, it's cost yours for. The square footage was right at.
Yeah.
Five-ten, I think.
Five-ten or?
Yeah, it's five hundred and ten dollars for a new permit. How many square feet? It was twenty-six.
Twenty-eight hundred square feet.
Are you living in the house?
No, not at this time. Because of the fact, we do not have an occupancy permit just yet.
But you have a, you have. Lights, electric, power.
And water. And water. Propane.
It's a, I, and I'm asking this for a reason, not not to be in your business, is is the property insured?
At this point in time, not yet.
No mortgage or anything on the property?
No.
Bought some, but issuing a grant needs a new.
No, I understand, I bring this down.
You guys didn't cause this, I guess there's an allegation here that we don't have the records, but that's an allegation, that's number one. Number two is, we're asking a lot here of Gene, that's a lot of his time now to go back out there and do a thorough investigation that we've gotta pay for. We gotta record something against the property miscellaneous instrument, there's a cost there. I'm of a mind that. There's a lot of culpability here uh, from this gentleman, and I respect the fact that he did this all, you're looking at an attorney that. Operates the same way, and I got caught in Lansing twenty years ago, right? But the law's the law, and you gotta follow it, so. And now we gotta try to put some mustard on this sandwich and make it palatable. So, my recommendation is you gotta go with the six hundred dollar, because that's where we're at procedurally. And we'll provide the methodology to get them in the home. But this is a real stretch, and this is a one off. This cannot be the norm.
To set this as a precedence is gonna get messy.
Yeah, and I put, this is purely contingent upon Gene doing that, and these folks being willing to record against their property. Miscellaneous instrument that says, all we have is a final inspection, we've had no verified inspections up to this point. And this can only be removed with this planning commission body's approval. So, that's gonna be recorded against the property if you wanna move forward.
Would we wanna draft that language?
Yes, yeah, I would draft it, yep.
So that would need to be in the motion. That you would draft that language. Uh, and your recommendation, it seems to me to go for a new permit cost, because we're gonna have a lot of cost in it.
Yeah, so it would be a motion to approve subject to one. Gene, final inspection. Number two, recording miscellaneous instrument. Which cannot be released without our approval. And then, three, after those have been satisfactorily approved, then the certificate of occupancy can be remitted, this would also include a six hundred dollar. Application fee.
Is it six hundred dollars or the five or ten?
I don't know the exact. So new permit. So, one, two, three, four.
So statutory permit fee. Yep, and then number four, then certificate of occupancy may be issued. That's being very gracious. In my opinion.
When? Would we be able to start setting this up, or how do I have to go about finishing this, I guess?
Well, uh, he's gonna draft this, um, you would need to come in and file for your permit. Um, and I know that you said that there's some, some costs there that you may have to work around a little bit. And then Gene would have to come out for his inspection, pending it passes the inspection, we get the language. You know, it could take a week or two for sure.
Okay. Uh, who would I need to contact, Amber?
Now, this has not passed yet, we still need to vote it from the board, this is all subject to the decision from the board here.
I understand.
All right, any more discussion from the board?
I just wanna be clear. About my signature on this document that I'm gonna prepare. I'm not gonna be liable for this.
That's because Nathan's gonna put the language in there.
What about the county, county not in favor?
Everyone, yep. Complete indemnification.
All right, we have a motion from the board.
I would make the motion, but I don't know how to word it properly.
Yeah, just just reference the uh, four points that I outlined earlier, because Amber's, Amber has them, that's why I went through them, yeah. Just make the uh, motion per Nathan's recommendation with the four points to be followed.
I make a motion. We proceed granting Mr. Ward the certificate of authority with the four points of reference. Our attorney has recommended.
Okay, all right, we have a motion from Howard, do we have a second?
So I uh, I. So I will second the motion, but would just like to. Put out for the record that this is definitely a, very much a one off, and not a. Standard practice for the county to become involved in.
Okay, we have a second, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much, everyone.
And you'll wanna get in contact with her maybe as soon as tomorrow, start working through this.
Definitely, yes, sir. Thank you, everyone.
Have a good night.
You too, thank you very much.
All right, before we go to time and date, um, anything else from the board?
Yes, we have one more item to review that's been, that's came in, the forty-one fifty-one boa drive. Um, this is um, runoff that's happening in front of our garage, from a new driveway that was put in. Um, over the summer. Do you have the gentleman here, if you'd like to state your name?
Hi, my name's Art Sutcliffe. Well, I live at forty-one fifty-one boa. My neighbor put in the driveway, now he had a water collection system in his old driveway, because the water went in his garage. So when he put the new driveway in, he tore out that part of it. And he explained to me that he was going to swale the driveway and have it run out to the street, but he's got this big hump in the driveway. So that's really impossible to do it, so what he ended up doing was. On part of the north side of it, the driveway, he's pitched a little bit into his yard. But it's about twenty-five feet to the north, and about twenty-five feet to the east. Okay, and that's about six hundred square feet to come into about a five foot area. Where you see up there on the board, on the board up there, at the very top right there where the bricks are at. From those bricks there to where the white bricks are, is where the property line is, so he's got about five feet to run six hundred square feet of water off. Plus what's coming down. Uh, he needs to put some type of a water collection system that'll take that water to the back, and he's got a backyard. And he needs to find some way to get that water into his backyard and disperse it. The one thing I don't wanna do is, I don't want where he just redirects it, and he puts it on the person to the west of me. Okay, there has to be a real, there has to be some type of a plan here. That would allow, and the way it's pitched right now. I think that you'd have to put up like on his driveway, you'd have to put like some type of a curb on top of the driveway. And then put some type of a wall or something, so he could swale that and turn it to the back, his pole barn's about. Thirty feet long and about, well, he put an addition on when he did. So I don't know how wide it is. And just, I'm looking for relief there, because there's a lot, all of that sand and stuff was from the last. When the last rain came down, I mean, he's eroding his own property also, with all of that water. You see wherever it is by the grass and all of that, all the sand is running up in there.
So, the stone, is that your property?
It's my property, yes, sir.
How does he approach his driveway? Your pen is right, stick there. And so, he is correct in saying that there is erosion. The originating point is the concrete driveway. He is the high point in that neighborhood.
He's about forty-four, thirty inches higher than I am. He comes in on the east side. The north side, uh, right now, when you're looking at that, the north side would be hit the wall of his pole barn. The west side would be the backside. Of the, which would be the runoff going out, the area would be running off. And then the east side would be the bottom of his driveway.
Gene, are you indicating you've been out there? And uh, what's your evaluation? Of the situation?
Having not seen the original driveway, that's, that's. All I know is there is some erosion going on now, when there's considerable rain, I don't think light rains caused much, but considerable rain. I think he could have done a better job of, of um. Shaping the concrete to avoid the issue. Because it is humped. Or slightly where the partial runoff goes to his property. I mean, there's no permitting for driveways, so we naturally then go out and.
How old is that piece of concrete?
He just put it in the summer.
This here?
Driveways, the other ones.
And this is slugged to keep the water from going into his driveway.
All right, I'm gonna tap the brakes on this conversation here, um, is this something we need to table?
I can appreciate seeking relief for this, I really can't, but I think you're before the wrong county officials, seeking relief. Um, the proper official would be one wearing a black robe. What you're dealing with here is, this isn't an area. Unless this gentleman has too much impervious coverage, and then we're implicated somehow. But this is dealing with coagulating water, and then directing it in a concentrated manner onto somebody else's property. Which is an issue between neighbors. So, my suggestion would be is attempt to talk to him, and if not, then you're gonna need to talk to a competent real estate land attorney that understands that you can't. Aggregate water in a concentrated manner and dump it on somebody else's property, and I'm not offering you legal advice. That's the status of Indiana law. So, while you have a lot of. Art in ears here, we can't afford you any relief, that's gonna be a different county official.
I understand. Thank you all so very much, I appreciate it.
Amber, how do I get back into the document, where is it at in here? Are you in the folder? I'm in the folder now, and then it'll be like. P C, board P C?
Yeah, six items, and then it'll be, I think, the third one down.
Yep, and then. PowerPoint, thank you, I can't find it.
Okay, anything else from the board?
That's all I have from the board, I don't know if you have any one public comment, but.
I have, I have one item, so. Um, somebody in Grovertown came here. And they said that their neighbor, I wasn't at the meeting, it was for some reason I wasn't at that one meeting, but their neighbor has dogs. That one person lives there, they have no running water, I know I talked to you, Robbie, recently about it, in Grovertown. Their neighbor's name is Noble. It's um. Tricia. Nothing's been done, so. I mean, they're, they got no septic, no nothing. I had no idea what's going on.
And again, that was something that was um, supposed to go back in front of the board um, in March.
Oh, so.
Mary was handling that, and we're starting to look into the cases. There's so many of them that we're trying to compare.
Um, as these people have been brought up, the twenty twenty and three is when they started with the one code enforcement. There are so many backlog code enforcement cases. That need to be reviewed, need updates to them, we need to get on certified letters, imposing the fines and placing liens on some of the properties for the. Cleanups or things that need to take place. It's a very large scale, I'm working with Mike at the health department, I'm getting some of these. Um, and whose jurisdiction that is with the no septic and who's putting a red tag on it. Um, because the septics are issued outside of our administration, those are issued through the health department.
Okay, well, I just know there's, he's like.
In a five gallon bucket, and don't get it outside.
Like, I have a lot of them. I mean, I have a lot of them that we have imposed fines on a lot of them, but there's not enough time. At one of these meetings for me and her to both do this, because. There's not enough time, we'd be here all night if we had to do these, but they have the imposed fines. But a lot of them are not, are not living at this property, or they have been deceased. So, then how do you really go about that?
Well, I just wondered what the status was.
Yeah, I'm just saying, we have a lot. No, but it's the same as these, you know, and that was handled by the planning commission. And not by code enforcement.
Yeah, I get it.
So we're trying to work to clean up some of these, especially the.
Trying to do it together.
And really getting the. Low of, once the fees are in place, once certified letters are out, but can you do the next step and keep that same process happening?
Okay, anything else from the board?
What?
No.
All right, I'm gonna open this up to the crowd, anybody have anything for us? All right, uh, time and date of the next meeting, uh, we have November twelfth at five thirty. I assume that's good with no, no issues with that?
Are we gonna try to set up a, that the meeting?
Amber, well, quick, just on the record, I know that I emailed you about the other meetings and not being paid, I don't wanna be paid for. Any future meetings either, so I just want that and work for it as well.
All right, so time and date of the next meeting will be November twelfth at five thirty P M. Uh, there's nothing else, we're gonna adjourn. We have a motion?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
We have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?